I know it, I know it. All right, folks, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Calling the Missoula City Council to order for November 10th, 2025. Calling is meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Before we get started with our agenda, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, folks, that came down, members of the public that came down to participate in tonight's meeting, and we'll go ahead and start with a roll call. Ms. Trimble.
All right, beginning of this evening's roll call with Anderson.
Present.
Asara.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Harlino. Absent. Crask.
Here.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones. Absent. Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Anne Vaseka.
Present.
And we do have a forum this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Trimble, and folks may have noticed that we have a new face, a new city council member joining us this evening, and I know many folks have followed this, but in case not, Betsy Crask has been appointed to Ward One as of this morning. This was based on city council's decision to fill the vacancy that had been created in Ward One when Jennifer Savage had stepped down because of her run in Ward Three. And because of the timeframe, city council made the choice to appoint the person that was elected by the voters in the general election, and should that vote be of basically a non-contested margin, which it was, then this person would start on Monday, November 10th. So Betsy Crask has been elected in Ward One for a four-year term. That four-year term will start in January, but in the meantime, she's been appointed for the remainder of the term, which Betsy will be, Councilor Crask will be serving with the council through December of this year in this role. So welcome, Councilor Crask. Nice to have you here. All right, you bet. All right, so we'll get going with our agenda here, and the first thing we have are our minutes, and we have minutes from October 27th of 2025. Do I have any changes, any questions or changes on the minutes from council members? Okay, I'm not seeing any, or I'm not seeing any online either, so those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. Next, we have our committee schedule for this Wednesday. Ms. Trimble.
There are no changes to the posted committee schedule. It is a full day, beginning at 9:45 and going until 5:00 PM. And just a reminder that if people do have questions or comments about the agenda, city staff has a holiday tomorrow, so we won't be available to answer those until Wednesday.
Great. Thank you very much for that note, and again, all committee meeting agendas and materials are on the City of Missoula City Council website that you can take a look at in advance. Okay, well, next we'll move on to our special presentations and proclamations. We don't have any neighborhood council updates this evening, but we have several proclamations. So I want to go ahead and start with the first, which is Native American Heritage Month. So we'll go ahead and share that on the screen, and I'll start reading that now. Whereas the City of Missoula acknowledges that we are in the homelands of the Salish and Kalispel people, today we offer our respect for their history and culture, for their ancient and continuing presence in this landscape, and for the path that they have shown us in caring for this place for generations to come. And whereas we acknowledge the ongoing impacts of systematic racism and intergenerational trauma that have resulted from historical injustice directed towards indigenous populations, including forceful removal from homelands and appropriation of land within boundaries of sovereign nations through purchase by non-native people. And whereas the City of Missoula strives to strengthen relationships with the Confederated Salish and Kootenai Tribes, enhancing trust and understanding and developing policies and practices that will aid in closing equity gaps and honor indigenous history, ongoing presence, and contemporary contributions in our communities. And whereas American Indian Heritage Month was first proposed in 1990 and later changed to Native American Heritage Month in 1991 by George H.W. Bush, with its roots starting from efforts by Red Fox James Blackfoot in 1914. And whereas this proclamation serves as a reminder of the City of Missoula's commitment to honor our relationship with sovereign nations and indigenous peoples and to uphold trust treaty responsibilities by ensuring ongoing collaboration and shared decision-making with CSKT leaders as we navigate the future. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, to value the history and rich cultures of indigenous peoples as we recognize their pride, resilience, determination, and patriotism for this country. All right. Thank you. Next, I'll move on to the next proclamation, which is Ethel McDonald Week. All right. Whereas Ethel McDonald believed every individual had the power to make a positive change in their community. And whereas Ethel McDonald did so herself for five decades by devoting her time, energy, and money to important community projects, including alternative transportation, open space, affordable housing, food insecurity, the arts, education, and others. And whereas Ethel McDonald was a tireless advocate for social justice and a consistent presence at rallies championing peace, human rights, and a better world for all God's children. And whereas Ethel McDonald exemplified through her actions, her words, and the way she lived her life what makes the community of Missoula so special. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the week of November 10th through 16th as Ethel McDonald Week. And I do believe that we have John McDonald here this evening to speak to this or just to be here. John, would you like to say a few words? We'd love to have you come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Davis. Thank you, council members. As the mayor said, my name is John McDonald. Pardon me, I'm the youngest son of Ethel. Just real quick, my mom would expect and demand I be brief, so I will. On behalf of our family, my brother and the rest of our family, I just wanted to say thank you. We really appreciate this, and it's a wonderful way to honor our mom. She did not do what she did for attention or notoriety, if you knew her. She did it because she believed that that was the right thing to do, and she believed that every good citizen had an obligation, a moral obligation, to help their community. Some of you may know, our mom started her own charitable foundation a few years ago, the Ethel McDonald Charitable Foundation. She funded this completely with her own money. A lot of it came from rent that she received for a second house she had in town that she rented to families that were struggling financially, and then she put some of her own retirement into it. On average, she donated about between $12,000 and $20,000 a year to local charities in Missoula. Proud to say that when she passed, she funded her foundation to a level that we're going to be able to continue to make those donations in perpetuity, and probably, according to her accountant, probably without ever touching the principal. She had a wonderful life, a full life, from biking solo into her 80s across Europe. A couple of years ago, she decided to wander off to Cuba for a couple of weeks to practice her Spanish and to play dominoes with old Cuban men in the park. She did a trip to China recently to learn more about a country that she thought was being unfairly vilified. She would tell you that this is too much, which is a refrain I heard a lot as a child, but our family, we think it's just perfect, and I think she would enjoy it. We are having a celebration for her November 16th, Sunday. If you worked with our mom or just want to stop by, there'll be, we're starting off with a bicycle, a little short bicycle trip in her honor, some African drumming, all the things that she liked. So I hope maybe we could see you on November 16th, and thank you again. Appreciate this.
Absolutely. It's our honor and privilege to recognize Ethel McDonald. She touched so many in Missoula and beyond. She was an incredible person to just lead her life by example, and we'll be riding from the Peace Center to Free Cycles on Sunday, so hopefully folks will join us in our bike parade prior to the celebration. It isn't the 70 miles that we biked with your mom for her birthday of 70, but it is, it's a reasonable distance for a group of people, and I think it's going to be wonderful. So all of our sincere condolences for your loss, and she's a great example of a life well-lived. We'll miss Ethel. Thank you. Thanks, John. All right. Speaking of a life well-lived, I am happy to share a proclamation this evening for Donna Gockler. So we'll get that up on screen. All right. So whereas Donna Gockler has devoted nearly five decades to the field of parks and recreation, including 34 years with the City of Missoula Parks and Recreation Department and 23 years as its director. And whereas Donna's leadership has shaped the landscape, programs, and partnerships that define Missoula's identity and quality of life, reflecting her conviction that parks and recreation are essential to community well-being and consistently crediting dedicated staff, residents, community partners, and volunteers as essential to this work. And whereas under her direction, the city completed many transformational projects, including Splash Montana, Currents Aquatic Center, Mobash Skate Park, and Fort Missoula Regional Park, while stewarding four voter-approved bonds that expanded Missoula's park system to over 50 developed parks, more than 4,000 acres of conservation land, and one of the most accessible urban trail systems in the region. And whereas Donna championed access and inclusion, ensuring residents of all ages, incomes, backgrounds, and abilities could participate in recreation and connect with nature so close to home, advancing projects and programs that will serve generations to come. And whereas Donna has been an integral member of the city's senior leadership team, contributing thoughtful, perspective, collaborative leadership, and clear guidance in shaping citywide policy, and her integrity, generosity, and commitment to public service embody the values of the City of Missoula and the spirit that makes our community strong. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the 12th day of November 2025 as Donna Gockler Day in the City of Missoula and encourage all residents to join in recognizing her extraordinary service and the lasting legacy of belonging, stewardship, and community she has helped cultivate. Donna's here tonight. Donna's here tonight and certainly deserves a rousing round of applause, and that proclamation really just summarizes so well the contributions, Donna, that you have made for our community. If you wish to say something, we would love to hear, but you do not have to. We do not mean to put you on the spot, but we always know that you have something wonderful to share with us, and we'd love to hear from you tonight. So given that we're not going to hear from you in your role as director for too long, we might hear from you as a resident coming up here shortly, but please, we'd love to hear from you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna Gockler, Director of Parks and Recreation. Wednesday is my last day in the office. I do have a few other things to do yet, like the park on in Midtown Commons. We'll be doing the design workshop there, and then, of course, I have many years of papers to clear out. I absolutely love Missoula. It's hard. I could never have imagined as a child getting to spend a career helping people meet each other, find ways to play, and being able to steward the land at the same time. And it wouldn't be possible. I've said this many times, I got to work under many wonderful mayors since Chemis, and it's been a fantastic road and a whole bunch of wonderful council members who have been incredibly supportive and always have appreciated the challenges, the reports, and the requests, and then literally thousands of staff. This summer, we had 400 Parks and Recreation employees delivering services to our community, doing our best to steward taxpayer dollars to provide the very best facilities. We're together, we can grow, find our gifts, meet each other, and have an exceptionally vibrant community through our public spaces and programs. So thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, and I look forward to following in people's footsteps like Ethel's, one of our great, one of my great supporters throughout my career and a wonderful mentor, and doing what I can to continue to contribute to our community. But thank you.
Absolutely. What a real honor. Thank you, Donna, and happy trails, as we would say. No better person to say that to. Thank you so much for being here. All right. I do have one more proclamation to read for us this evening, and I'm going to find this one on my screen here. So we have a celebration, a 250th celebration to proclaim this evening, and this is in regards to the U.S. Marine Corps 250th Birthday. So whereas on November 10th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress, meeting in Philadelphia, passed a resolution establishing the Continental Marines, marking the birth date of the United States Marine Corps. And whereas the First Marine Corps commissioned officer Captain Samuel Nicholas set up the First Marine Corps Recruiting Headquarters at Toon Tavern in Philadelphia, looking for a few good men. And whereas Marines stepped up to help fight on land and at sea the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, the Spanish-American War, both World Wars, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, literally serving from the halls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli. And whereas today, the men and women of the U.S. Marine Corps continue their tradition of defending their country in American interest and keeping peace around the world. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize November 10th, 2025, as the U.S. Marine Corps 250th Birthday. And we started out by recognizing Native American Heritage Month, and I just want to recognize the deep respect for the warrior culture that are with many indigenous communities, and that includes, of course, right here in our area. Not sure if folks had a chance to go up to the powwow that was in Pablo over the weekend, but it was specifically to honor the tribal members and indigenous warriors and veterans of the United States. And so in so many ways, a lot of these things are tied together tonight, and largely it's all about service to community and pride in what we stand up for. And the United States, we're fortunate to still continue to be able to share our opinion and fight for what we believe in. And so with that, I'll conclude my remarks, but thank you all so much for the opportunity to share these with you this evening. And with that, we'll go ahead and get to some other business items, but sharing these types of things are one of the best parts about our city council meeting. So thank you so much. Appreciate everybody that came down tonight, and take care if you're heading out right now. Thank you. All right. So that does wrap up special presentations and proclamations. We have a pretty straightforward agenda. There's not a whole lot of business on it. First, we will start with public comment for items that are not on the agenda. The first period of public comment on items not on the agenda is limited to 20 minutes total, with up to three minutes allotted per speaker. Each person may speak once per meeting concerning items not on the agenda. In-person comments take precedence. Sign-ups is required and follows a first-come, first-served basis. The second period of public comment on items not on the agenda will follow immediately after the conclusion of all regular business and continue until all comments have been taken. So I do see that we have some folks that have signed up this evening. As Claire Trimble mentioned, this is our second time with this new process, so bear with us as we get used to it, but I think, you know, so far, so good. So the microphone is on, it's hot, and Matthew Strohmeyer is the first person who has signed up for comments this evening. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Matty. I speak for the Homeless Outreach Team, as well as those I serve, and I'm thinking about Native American Heritage Month today. A disproportionate amount of tribal members in our community are unhoused. And I want to thank them for their resilience and kindness as I serve them and the beautiful love they share and the openness and trust that they extend to us to allow them to try to make what's wrong right. And I also, as they invite me to into their community, into the powwow, I think about those members of our community who are both native members and unhoused, and I hope that affects the decision-making of the council and as we honor them, that that's reflected in the decisions that you all make. This is a time of a lot of food and financial insecurity in our community. I wanted to share a story. I was at the Transit Center today doing what I do, sharing food for those in need, and some of our unhoused neighbors at the Transit Center shared their food with those who were getting on the bus to head to the food bank. You know, that's just how people tend to be. What else is on my mind? Oh, yeah, so we turned the conversation last week to, rather than what we can do to our unhoused population regarding cutting funding or slashing support systems, about the immediacy and the need to support them in this time as the winter season changes. Right after that night, I went to work and somebody, his hands were already frostbitten, and he couldn't pick up his things, so he got the care he needed at Partnership Health Center, but I just wanted to express that, yeah, the need is very much here, and the Homeless Outreach Team can really benefit from material goods. Don't hold on to your camping gear because, you know, there's folks who need it more. I've let go of all of my things. I also wanted to, my time's running out because I'm rambling, but I wanted to emphasize the housing sprint. We need to centralize that resource to be at the shelter and happen year-round. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight, Matty. You bet. All right, Barbara Polley, come on up.
My name is Barbara Polley. I'm from the South Beach Triangle neighborhood. I live behind Tremper's. My questions tonight are that the Midtown Commons, oh, sorry.
You can, and you can pull the microphone closer to the podium if that's helpful for you.
The Midtown Commons project had little public input by the mayor or the city council on the October 23rd presentation. The Missoula Economic Partnership, I believe, was instrumental in the selection and negotiation with a developer, but did not give the public any information on other options, competing bids, city-specific provisions of infrastructure, or the number of housing units. Can we have another update with the developer's engineers? Before agreeing to the contract with a developer, will this project provide workforce/mid-range housing and/or affordable housing? The purpose of the Midtown Commons was to build more affordable housing. Could we have at least 20% affordable and 80% mid-range? The contract has yet to be signed. Who is assuming the environmental cleanup of log waste? Is the developer assuming this potential cost? Also, for the taxpayers, the urban renewal district assessments will continue permanently, from what I could tell. Any excess tax collections above the debt retirement payments will be used for more projects. Normally, the urban renewal district would cease with the maturity date of the bonds, but a new project needing bond funding would extend the date of the maturity. For example, urban renewal district number two had bonds issued in 2006, 2007, 2013, and 2022, each with probably at least 15 years thereafter. Thankfully, I found out recently that Missoula Redevelopment Agency is remitting funds to the city, but that does not reduce our tax assessments. As the residential streets are blighted with potholes, consider using the excess TIF money or contingency funds for major street repair projects in each urban renewal district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Ms. Polley. All right. John is gone. All right, and Big K Montana Spitsmocker, you're next.
Yeah, Big K, Carl. I'm in a game changer now. It's not business as usual like at, what do I call it, the facilities, which would be 1110 West Broadway and 1919 North Street. I was called something specific tonight that is oversighted by the Sheriff's Department. Now that puts us into a new ballgame, and I report it to appropriate individuals of the facility, and if it happens again, I will fill out a report that goes directly to other facilities other than this city. Seems like there's a certain class of people that got that disease that was at the facilities of 1919 West Broadway and 9, no, North Street, 1110 West Broadway. So before you criticize Donald Trump, you better have a good look in the mirror because you're not much different than he is. But if Donald Trump was a whole lot smarter, he would be a American terrorist. Can you imagine how hot the phone lines were coming out of the airports this weekend that the Senate converged on a movement to bring together who's going to be re-elected to the Senate of the 14 Democrats that are moving things along? So let's not criticize Donald Trump for what he had to put up in New York. The election is an entirely different brawl game, and he's so ignorant on that one. But what happened in New York was two consenting private businesses that New York City wasn't included, that he could haul in a lot of taxes on inflated value. So I will tell you, things So I will tell you, things are moving along really well with appropriate people that are very good at documenting of the problems I've had for the last 10 years, especially in Salt Lake City. And the fact of the matter, they were not as bad here in Missoula because there are some appropriate people that are realizing it better than Salt Lake City. And there's a lot of similarities of Salt Lake City and Missoula.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Thank you. Those, Mr. Spitzmacher is the last of the folks that signed up for public comment. We do have some remaining time within this period. And Chris Kay, I see your hand is raised. Would you like to provide your public comment now?
Hi, my name is Chris Kennedy, Ward One, K E N N E D Y. And for the benefit of those in the room, if you get here too late to sign the paper, you can always sign up on Teams and get in that way, as I have done today. I'm just really here to say congratulations to those who won the election and special congratulations to two who did not lose the election, Daniel Carlini and Sandy Vaseka, but who really served this community beautifully during their terms. And I'm very proud of their work and their independent voice and all that they contributed in these last years. Thank you. I also want to say my usual exhortations, which go kind of like this. I should make a song out of it. But there's a lot of mention on this council about progress, about development, about yielding a return. And I want to say, is that what Missoula is all about? Or is supporting our fellow man, raising up the level of life for our neighbors, a little more important than that? Because it seems when we grant $20 million to for-profit corporations very quickly, yet need to have passionate debates for yielding the Pavarello Center $200,000, it seems like there's something wrong here, in my opinion. I just hope that you'll spend that time and energy for the benefit of our fellow citizens. In particular, welcome to Betsy. You are my new ward rep, and I hope we can chat sometime. And I can hear how your ideas have developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay. We do have some time left if there's any other members of the public that wish to make comment on items not on the agenda. We have some time left on this agenda item. Okay. Not seeing anybody raising their hand. Okay. We'll go ahead then and wrap up public comment on items not on the agenda. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings this evening, nor new business. And we do not have any items. Oh, wait, we have consent agenda, sorry. Agenda numbers changed. Okay, consent agenda is next. Ms. Trimble, if you'll go ahead and call that up on screen and read aloud the consent agenda for us, that would be great.
Here we go. Should be up on the screen. On this evening's consent agenda, we'll start with a motion to ratify accounts payable or claims for checks dated November 4, 2025, in the amount of $2,308,886.12. We have another accounts payable claim for, which is a motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated November 11, 2025, in the amount of $1,936,028.36. We have a motion to suspend City Rule 21 and set a public hearing on November 17, 2025 to hold a public forum on an application from the city or from the Missoula County Public Schools to vary from the Title 20 zoning code requirements for dynamics display signs and ground signs at C S Porter Middle School. Under state and local law, the city council's role is to conduct this public forum and take public comment. It does not have a decision-making role. It would require a two-thirds vote of those present in voting this evening to set this public hearing. And finally, our last item this evening is a motion to set a public hearing for November 17, 2025, for the Phase Development Review and Phasing Plan Amendment for the Aspire Subdivision Phases 1 through 6, and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for further discussion on November 12.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. All right. So folks, we have our consent agenda because items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agendas to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. So now is an opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda. Any of the items on this consent agenda? If anybody has public comment, please come on up now. Again, public comment on the consent agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any in the room. And I'm not seeing any hands raised online either or comments on the consent agenda. Okay. We'll go ahead and wrap up public comment on the consent agenda. Are there any council members that wish to abstain or separate an item for vote? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Then we can go ahead and do a voice vote for this. Ms. Trimble, please.
All right, voting on this evening's consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no regular business under any of our committee reports. And so now we get back to public comment again on items not on the agenda. Anybody for public comment on items not on the agenda?
This is a really speedy meeting, my goodness. My name is Carrie Schreiber, coming from South Gate Triangle Leadership Team in the Midtown Commons Project. And a couple of things that are not on that subject. The Cold Springs School's sudden closure is impacting the community. I saw a lot of conversation about that online today. There's daycare centers and kids programming and community is really concerned about how the fallout's going to go and how sudden the announcement was. Makes a really hard impact on the public. So I'm hoping in closing comments to learn a little bit more about that. If you all have anything to say, I appreciated the Native American Heritage proclamation and that commitment to have collaboration with the C Salish-Kootenai Confederated Tribes. And I'm wondering, how does that come into practice? Like when we're looking at selling off these 40 to 50 acres of city land, is there collaboration with the tribes in looking at priorities there? For the Midtown Commons Project, I wanted to state that the park's planning process will be November 19, which is a Wednesday, from 5 to 8 at Jefferson School. The feedback I've been getting from the community is a lot of disappointment over the size of this park and people are disheartened, not really wanting to participate. I had eight, 14 members come over to my place on Saturday morning and none of them would take flyers. So I went around today to area businesses and did some education, dropped off flyers, and getting some things laminated so that they can be up in public spaces. And I'm kind of wondering why that wasn't already taken care of by the Parks Department to invite the folks that are using the area to know about this opportunity for for feedback. Without knowing what type of commercial is going to be bordering the park, it's really hard to plan on what that park should look like. But I did hear a lot of enthusiasm from like employees at Bob Ward's or Big Dipper about having a space that they can use on their lunch hour, as well as neighbors that are used to walking their dogs there. Of course, would love for that to continue open. I don't know. I just hope we we would get some actual engagement with the community through easy signage rather than just these online platforms. And again, people are very confused why we went into this conversation talking about affordable housing and talking about park. And we're coming out of it talking about market rate housing and insisting that commercial space be a large part of what's being built here. It is a bait and switch from both the Midtown Master Plan and from what we thought this was going to be about.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Ms. Schreiber. Anybody else for public comment on items not on the agenda? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Katie Thompson, and we own a property over by the Midtown Commons. I guess I would just hope, sorry, I'm not, I get so nervous speaking. I would really hope that we don't rush this through. It's really hard as a citizen to stay caught up, to read all the studies we pay tax money for. I'm kind of getting on the website, trying to get caught up and honestly back up all the things that you guys have decided to spend money on, which are studies of what people want to see, studies of the needs of the population. And hopefully next week I will be able to quote from all the stuff that we've gathered and things that you have put our public money towards so that we can plan for the future and also meet the needs of the public. And I'm really not seeing it with this development. This was bought with public lands, I mean, bought with public funds. And so it is really cool to think, hey, we own this right now, so let's try to have some input. And I'm just begging you guys, because so far I do not feel like you have considered what we've gotten up and spoken to repeatedly, which is the needs of the seniors, senior housing, affordable housing. So if we let this developer in to do his thing and we don't have anything in place stipulating, you can say, oh, well, he's going to charge in the mid-range. Well, you all know, you will not have control over that. So, you know, now is our opportunity. I also feel like you're not taking into consideration the surrounding neighbor population as well as the increased population that will be coming into this development and that you're just giving the bare minimum for a park, which is pretty heartbreaking. So I feel like, and preserving open space and all these things, I just feel like I would really like to see the action behind the words and the money we've already spent. And I do feel like I speak for a lot of the public, which is way too busy with kids, way too busy with jobs, way too busy with the world, kind of what it is right now. I have to believe that they just, they're going to see this development going up and they're going to be really shocked and upset at kind of how it's being quickly put through. So I really ask that you start hearing us. Because I I know there's not very many people here, but I do think we represent what a lot of the people would be saying if they had the time and they didn't have to put their kids to bed and they weren't exhausted and they didn't have a million other things to do. So, yeah, I I guess I'm still hoping for a bigger park. Next week, like I said, I'll try to get my ducks in a row to bring, bring more facts.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening, Ms. Thompson. Are there other members of the public wishing to make comment?
Robert Dunlap, Ward Six. These proclamations, especially the one about Native American Heritage Month, what is it? It's just a piece of paper. What feeling do you have for it? Put a price tag with it. Make it have meaning. Make it mean something. Not just the mayor shouting the proclamation. Nobody pays attention to. Why don't you give them back Marshall Mountain? They used to have a lot more territories than that. But make it meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening? Sorry, we do only allow one round of public comment on items not on the agenda. Other public comment, folks that haven't had a chance to comment yet this evening. Okay, not seeing any in the audience, any online. All right. Mary Giuliani, please go ahead and unmute yourself now and I'll go ahead and tie me on this side. Three minutes for your public comment, please. Ms. Giuliani, can you unmute? Okay. Ms. Giuliani, you're showing as unmuted on our side. Give it another second here. If there's not a way for, yes, participation, it is the only comment with hands raised. Oh, hands down. All right. And Ms. Giuliani, you can call in at the top of the agenda. There's a phone number that you can call into. That is 406-384-6960. Once you're in, you'll have to press a conference ID. See if you can get yourself unmuted there. Okay. Sorry, I'm having some technical issues being able to make your public comment this evening. Give it another second. Okay. We'll have to catch you next time, Mrs. Giuliani. I'm sorry. Sure, we can do that this evening. Please have her identify herself for the record.
Hello?
This is Mary. Can y'all hear me?
A little bit, not well. If you could put it up to the microphone a little bit more or turn up your volume, please, Ms. Schreiber. Thank you. Schreiber, excuse me. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Mary Giuliani, and I wanted to, I have some questions as well about publicly-owned land with our taxpayer money, which we bought, and which is the situation with this Midtown Commons development. I was at the MRA tips discussion today and Carl England, the chair of the MRA, said we don't buy or sell land without city council approval. So I guess this kind of ties into a previous commenter, Katie. She had a question about when does it come to city council? And at that point, is it already too late to make adjustments in the development agreement? When does the public get input on this? We've been told that we get public input on the park, but it seems like if it's our publicly-owned land with, again, our, we bought with our money, if there's an opportunity for us to have involvement earlier on different parts of the project. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Giuliani. Thank you, Ms. Schreiber. All right. Any of the members of the public wishing to make comment this evening? Okay, not seeing any in the audience nor online. That does wrap up our public comment for items not on the agenda. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to communications from the mayor. And I first want to start by, again, welcoming Councilor Crask and and also thanking all of the residents for getting out and voting in the general election. I'm I'm very honored to continue to serve as mayor for a full four-year term. I want to thank I want to thank all of the councillors who ran and all of those that are not serving on council that also ran for having just the desire to, raise your hand, and get involved in local government. And it's, it is not an easy thing to do. So congratulations on a successful endeavor regardless of the outcome. And, you know, for those that will continue serving, very much look forward to our work together. And then for those that are not going to continue serving, I just want to very much appreciate you and that time and energy and dedication for the work to work on local issues. You know, you're working with your neighbors and you're making tough decisions all the time and that's not always the easiest thing to do. I did also, did want to mention and appreciate Counselor Nugent bringing this to my attention when you were working on a task force associated with the United Way this Friday, when we got notice from Missoula County Public Schools that Cold Springs Elementary would not be able to continue with Missoula Childcare Advantage for basically an impending roof issue. So they had a roof failure in the wing where the Missoula Childcare Advantage takes place. And Counselor Nugent, you may have some updates on this. I'll just mention that our Parks Department has been working alongside, Missoula Parks Department does not operate any part of Missoula Childcare Advantage, but we have been working with Missoula County Public Schools on the potential to utilize some space in Jefferson School. And it sounds like we'll be brainstorming together what some options are there in terms of helping these providers that are providing childcare. I believe there are six or seven child providers there. Hopefully, the Missoula County Public Schools, the United Way are working very hard with Missoula Childcare Advantage to get these folks relocated. And more to come on that, but very important. And then, yeah, there was a lot of interest tonight in Midtown Commons. And, you know, I'll mention again that this, from the very beginning of purchasing the land behind Bob Ward's, that has been first called South Gate Crossing, now it's Midtown Crossing. It has always been with the goal of achieving the goals in the Midtown Master Plan, which are vast. There's a large vision, a very significant public engagement process, many years involved in that work. And so the developer that was selected meets various goals associated with the Midtown Master Plan. And so we're continuing with that work. I will mention that the open house and the, excuse me, the park visioning opportunity is coming up in mid-November. There is a website that contains November 19th, in fact. And thanks for the idea of putting some sandwich boards or something like that out there. We'll continue to take a look at what we can do to drive more members of the public there. But I would really encourage folks to take a look at Midtown Commons on Engage Missoula. There's a ton of background information for how this project came to be and how the property acquisition came to be. So it's really helpful to take a look at all that context. And, you know, one thing I will say, Mr. Dunlap, absolutely, you're right. We've got a lot of, we need to put our money where our mouth is and our actions where our mouth is when working with not only the Salish and Kootenai, Confederate Salish-Kootenai tribes, and, but other indigenous communities as well. Some things that we're doing, in fact, we have been working with the Salish tribe when the acquisition of Marshall Mountain happened. So again, the county and the city purchased that property from a private entity that owned that area. And we're continuing to work with the tribes, not only on interpretive signage, but also in restoration of some of the waterways in the creek because it's important bull trout ecosystems. And so we continue to work on that together. Some current actions that we're working on right now, we're working on figuring out ways that tribal members can access our facilities with residential pass. And we are hoping to, we're hosting an event this spring that we're hoping tribal members will come and present on some of the projects that we are working on together and that they're working on their perspective this spring. So lots of different things happening in that space. The other thing, you know, I'll just mention, and I did talk about this a bit, mid-October, October 20th, after we celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Missoula, the city recognizes that day, so our offices are closed. And so it does give the opportunity for folks to go down and celebrate the powwow and other celebrations at Bear Tracks Bridge. That's formerly known as Higgins Street Bridge. And that renaming was in collaboration and partnership with the Salish Peoples. And that is an awesome opportunity to get down to downtown Missoula and celebrate with the Salish tribe and others celebratory dance and culture and just learn more from one another. I will also mention that, and I did say this a bit again, but I'll say, if you haven't had a chance to drive by the Missoula Art Museum, I hope you do. There's a 22-foot steel sculpture titled Coyote Is Seeing All The Land. And this is an art piece that has been donated by Jean Quick-Tesi Smith, an incredible Salish artist who really has helped establish the Salish Peoples', both historical and contemporary presence in the Missoula area. Again, this being their homelands. And it's a fantastic installation and one that is really to be celebrated. So it's just really incredible. You can't miss it. It's 22 feet, very bright, out in front of our Missoula Art Museum, and it's just incredible. And so with that, I'll go ahead and just say, great to have everybody aboard. And I'll turn it over to city council for your comments this evening. And I'll start with Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. First of all, welcome. Glad you're serving with us and I hope you're excited. No regrets. I will touch a little bit more, but I don't want to speak out of turn. Missoula Childcare Advantage is a program under the United Way that was formed when I was the United Way President. I'm no longer on that board, but when they kind of discovered that they might have some issues, they asked me to join them on Friday for a meeting to hear from that. The school district was given an engineer's report on Friday morning. It's dated Friday morning, that expressed concern about the building and that the people had to vacate while they did tests. The engineers said today that they're hopeful that it's not as bad as it seems. However, they need to cut into the ceilings in the classrooms to look above and discover that, so they won't know until they go up. I know that Missoula Childcare Advantage and Missoula County Public Schools are working side by side to try and find alternatives. They walked through another building today and are hopeful. The state licensing representative based out of Missoula was there as well. So they are hopeful that within the coming days, they're going to have a clear path forward on what can be done. But that's a very unfortunate situation. And I will say, from my perspective, just being able to kind of get an update on that and then speak with the mayor, that everybody who can contribute to kind of helping try and address that issue of 70-plus children not having childcare that did on Friday are jumping in and doing that. So hopefully, more updates to come in the coming days. And thanks to MCPS for doing all they can to help Missoula Childcare Advantage on that front. I wanted to touch on a couple of things. First of all, the, I guess the Director of the Midtown Association messaged me and wanted to ask me to mention that the Midtown Association is very supportive of the broader idea of the Midtown Commons. And as they shepherded the Midtown master planning process, this is part of what they kind of envisioned there. But as people know, we don't have anything in front of council yet. So we don't have the details. And I know when they're ready, the mayor and staff will bring them to us and we'll be able to evaluate those and make a decision. But we just, we don't have all of them in front of us yet. So to an extent, what the public knows as far as the open houses and things like that are what we know as well. So I think that's fair to say. And last thing, I just wanted to acknowledge, I know there's been some talk about movement on the government shutdown and setting aside any opinions on that. Many of our constituents are going to the marketplace to shop for health insurance right now and finding that their health insurance is going up 500, 600 or more dollars a month. And you start to do the math on that, that's awful. It is not sustainable. And all the talking points in the world can't change the fact that everybody, regardless of political party in Washington, should be trying to figure out a way to make it less expensive for people to buy health insurance right now. They can solve it long-term, but if something isn't done about the expiring subsidies of the ACA, there are going to be people who cannot afford health insurance that are going to go without. Our country is going to be less healthy and it is going to drive more and more people into poverty. So that is something that I hope everybody can set aside, whatever opinions they might have currently on the government shutdown and look at the bigger picture, because that's going to affect millions and millions and millions of Americans, including thousands of Missoulians.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Davis. Just a quick note to congratulate my new wardmate. Yeah, welcome. It's really great to have you at the Horseshoe and there's a lot of work and we're excited to have you here. That's it for me.
Sorry, Counselor Becerra. Thank you, Counselor Nelson.
Nothing other than, Betsy, welcome and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Farmer?
Also welcome, Betsy. It's a fun job most days and really, really hard all days. So welcome, and I'm really excited that you're here.
Thank you. Counselor Cheryl?
I'm going to do that, although I had an opportunity to tell her that this morning and to attend her swearing-in. So that was exciting and meet her cute little daughter. So I wanted to echo also what the mayor said for everyone that ran in this election, whether you won or you lost or you, you know, got primaried out. It is a big thing to run. And I know Betsy had said this morning how happy she was, that it was over. And I'm sure everyone feels like that. But campaigning is hard. It is time-consuming. It is stressful. And I just, you know, we need people running for this seat. And so I am just appreciative of everyone that ran and everyone that got their ideas out there. So thank you to all.
Thank you, President Cheryl, and Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor, and welcome to the Horseshoe, Counselor Crask. Do you know what you're in for? It's too late now, though. I was there this morning, so. Just really quick, just a reminder, tomorrow is Veterans Day on the heels of Marine Corps Birthday today. So thank you to all who served, fellow soldiers, Marines, airmen, sailors, guardians. I had to look that one up. If you're in the Space Force, you're a guardian. I had no idea until I looked it up. Now I know. But that aside, you know, DeWasse Steel, I suspect Counselwoman Vasika has some information about gatherings and to-dos with veterans tomorrow, celebrations and remembrances and things like that. So I invite everyone to, take time on their busy day tomorrow and just, you know, remember folks that have served and continue to serve our country. And just one more thing, I appreciate the Marine Corps Birthday today. I can attest, having been invited a number of years ago to a Marine Corps Birthday celebration as a soldier, it's rare for a soldier to be included in tight celebrations like that. It's kind of the wrong thing. I just attest that no one celebrates a service birthday the way the Marine Corps celebrates a service birthday. So I'll just leave it at that. So, but thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Jordan? Yeah, nothing much other than welcome, Ms. Crask. Look forward to working with you. All right. Thank you. And Counselor Vasika?
Thank you. Sometimes we are accused of being an echo chamber, but I will chime in and echo welcome. It was nice that your first meeting was a gentle one like today. So hopefully you'll have a lot of more gentle ones, because I see a lot of hard ones coming up in the near future. I wanted to first start off with the TIF meeting that happened at City Club today was very robust and fun. And it was one of the most crowded City Club meetings I've been to. So I wanted to thank the City Club for putting on those tough discussions, because it's really fun to have opposing sides in a room and discussing pros and cons on what, on different beliefs. So that was a really fun meeting today. I will say, the elephant in the room, I did lose my election. And I am very proud to have served. This is my sixth year. This is not my farewell speech yet, because I have not done yet. But I was a newlywed when I first ran, when I was 29, and now I have two children. And I don't, surprised I don't have any gray hair yet from this job, but it's been really fun. But I will have my farewell speech when I'm, I'll finish. I did want to point out that since I was appointed, my last week will be the first week of December, so it's kind of odd like that. So I just wanted to point that out. And the, leading up to that, I wanted to thank you, Bob, because I did have some information. Somebody's going to have to take my spot with giving off all the historical and activities related to what's going on locally with days that we have off. But tomorrow is Veterans Day. Veterans and people who have served, people who are currently serving, people who want to serve are very near and dear to my heart. I have a lot of family members who are either active or veterans. And it's, I'm really, really proud to live in this country and it's all because of them. So thank you to all of them. Many of you know Susan Campbell-Renault puts on the majority of the veteran stuff that goes on all throughout the Missoula. I never did a publicly thinker for the, again, the most, another beautiful ceremony on 9/11 with all those flags. It takes a lot of prep work and a lot of active work during doing that. And that's, my four-year-old actually once become a police chief, Chief Lonnie, because he was obsessed with him all day that day. But I am going to get into what she said on the radio. There is a note here from Montana Talks with Aaron Flint, that's on 99.7. He said that if you are a veteran or want to recognize a veteran, he will be at the American Legion on Rhonan Street, Missoula, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And they will have microphones open for you if anyone is interested in doing that. And so I'm just going to get into what Susan did say. She says, "The ceremony has been going on since November 11th, 1926, when the Doughboy Statue was dedicated by members of the American Legion Post 27 and its auxiliary. The Doughboy Statue depicts a World War I soldier called a doughboy because soldiers ate their dough and other food in their metal helmets. Veterans are encouraged to wear their uniform, hat, or shirt related to their branch of service. Everyone is encouraged to attend to honor our veterans on their day." And that is at 11 o'clock on November 11 at the Doughboy Statue here downtown. U.S. Army Colonel Vanessa Berry, retired, will be the keynote speaker. Members of the VFW Post 209 Honor Guard, American Legion Post 27 Color Guard, Knights of the Columbus Patriotic Order, and Daughters of the American Revolution will participate. Wreaths presented at the base of the Doughboy Statue are made by members of the American Legion Post 68 Auxiliary headed by Helen Moore. Prayers will be given by the Reverend Paul Armstrong, Chaplain of American Legion Post 27, and the singing of the National Anthem will be led by Gina Haig. According to Susan, also happening on Veterans Day will be the traditional Veterans Day breakfast from 7:00 to 9:00 AM at American Legion Post 27 at 8:29 Rhonan Street in Missoula. And donations are gladly accepted to offset the cost of the breakfast and to raise money for American Legion Post 27 projects that help local veterans. So thank you to everyone who's involved in that. And the ceremony happens rain, snow, or shine, and I hope to see everyone there. And thank you, everyone, for running a very, at least in majority, this is a very fair election. And it's an honor to still be with you for at least the next three or four weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Vasika. Yep, there we go. Thank you, Counselor Vasika, very much. Counselor Crask?
I just wanted to say that I am really honored and grateful to be here. I'm really grateful for all the conversations that were happening through the election process, folks in this room. And I'm just really looking forward to serving Ward One and our broader community. I am also grateful to everyone on council. I'm grateful to be with folks on council who aren't going to be here in a couple months to get to learn from you and just in a couple of months, to get to learn from you and just really grateful to everyone in advance for all the guidance and support that I'm sure you'll provide to all my questions, um, as I learn and transition into this role. So thank you all.
All right. You bet. Thank you, Councilor Crask. So let's see, we have, uh, Councilor Anderson online. Any comments this evening?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I will back clean up on the welcome to Councilwoman Crask. Look forward to working with you and it was fun, um, helping you throughout your campaign. So hard work does pay off, so welcome. I want to, um, also thank our, um, military members and retired and, uh, military members for your service and all that you do to make our country, um, truly one of a kind. And it's, um, quite a feat to, uh, put yourself out there, writing what I have heard is the ultimate check with, uh, um, up to and including your life. So, um, appreciative that there are so many people who answer the call to public service in that way. And I also want to take, take a little bit of comments from my council, or my fellow council member, Nugent, in regards to, um, the folks in our community who are suffering. Yes, very important to point out the, um, you know, increases to healthcare. You know, not only will it continue to drive more people into poverty, but it will cost all the rest of us more money. So economically, um, there's no upside to any of this. And we get sicker and, um, I, as a country that prides itself in so many other things, the fact that we will, are so flippant about some of the most basic services like healthcare, um, continuing a housing crisis is really frustrating. But also the fact that SNAP benefits and our food banks are seeing an unprecedented amount of need with government employees not being paid, um, many government employees being let go. So, um, if, during the holiday season, uh, tis, which is coming right up, encourage everybody to think about giving a little bit of extra, especially to the Montana Food Bank Network and our local food banks. They're doing so much and they already had such a high demand that's only increasing as politicians are unfortunately playing politics, um, with some very basic services like feeding people, who are, feeding people who are the most, um, at risk, which SNAP benefits is for children. So, um, it's pretty appalling that we need to make a plea to folks to kind of step in where the government is dropping the ball. But, um, we need all to kind of look out for each other right now and give a little bit extra where you can. And hopefully, um, you know, government will sort of get working and actually serve the people, which is what it's meant to do. So with that, uh, thanks, everyone, and, um, we'll see you all soon.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments and that wraps up our council comments this evening, which brings us to the end of our city council meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming down this evening. I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:17 PM. Thank you.